Call to order the regular meeting, West Valley City Council. We welcome you all here tonight. We note that we have six members of the council present. Councilman Vincent is excused. With that then, we'll go to our opening ceremony. Councilwoman Lang.
Would you please rise and make this pledge of allegiance with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the rule of law for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Our minutes of November 24th. Do we have a motion on the minutes?
May I move that we approve the minutes?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion or are they okay the way they are? Looks like they're okay the way they are. All in favor of approving the minutes of November 24th? Please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passed unanimously. I didn't see any scout groups here and I think the rest we're going to take care of here in a few minutes, so we'll go on. And Councilwoman Lang has the next item on our agenda, which is an awards presentation.
Yes, this award is our Essential Peace Award. Intermountain Bobcat, a business unit of Scott Intermountain Companies, is a full-service equipment distributor supplying Bobcat brand machinery, products throughout the Intermountain West. Intermountain Bobcat provides equipment sales and rentals, parts, authorized service, project support, and equipment financing. In 2019, after being recruited to West Valley City by the redevelopment agency, Intermountain Bobcat became, began construction on its flagship facility. Since then, Intermountain Bobcat has been, had a valued presence in the community. Several years ago, employees of Intermountain Bobcat playing in the city softball leagues noticed that the softball fields at Centennial Park would benefit from additional maintenance. Officials at Intermountain Bobcat, seeing the opportunity to help the community, offered to bring equipment to dress and level the field each year. As a result, West Valley City Parks and Rec forged a partnership with Intermountain Bobcat to improve the softball fields at Centennial Park. West Valley Parks and Recreation agreed to have new infield mix brought in each year to make up for lost material, which Intermountain Bobcat would scarify? Which I don't even know what that is. A new, the new infield mix with the existing material to do a finished level using equipment and manpower the city does not have. We would like to extend the West Valley City Essential Peace Award to Intermountain Bobcat in recognition of its service to the city. We express our gratitude for the high-quality softball fields at Centennial Park that the people of West Valley enjoy as a result of our valuable partnership with Intermountain Bobcat. And I do have to say, this business that they, you know, we recruited to the city has employees that live in the city, that participate in the recreation of the city, and then the business partners and the owners of that business are willing to let them use our equipment to better our fields. And I'm just thankful for you guys' participation. And I know we have Mr. Johnson here. Would you stand, come up to the mic and tell us who else you have with you? And then, would you, Ron, and shake everybody's hand?
Alright.
I'm Steve Jackman, Product Support Manager for Intermountain Bobcat. Skip Frank Home, he's the Sales Manager. Faith Patrick, she's the GM. And Jess Scott, he's the President of the Company.
Okay, thank you.
One, two, three. I'll give a couple.
Thanks guys.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Yes, and I would say thank you as well. It's great when companies give back to the city and appreciate the great work you do. I wish there was more we could say or do, but that's usually the limit, is a nice little award and recognition. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, the next item on our agenda is our comment period. We go now to our public comment. We have a couple of people who have signed up. We just note that it's a maximum of five minutes. It's not an interaction or discussion, but it's an opportunity for a member of the public to say what they want to say. So typically, it's not an interactive type of discussion, but rather more like a presentation, so. With that, we have two that were signed up tonight. Mr. Mike Markham. If you would come up and then, we have one other one.
Hey, Mike Markham, she has all my stuff. It's on the paper. I just sat through the study meeting. There was a lot of time and effort put into, you know, building specs, how close you can be to your side yard, your backyard. I don't know why poor Steve was put through all that because we've got so many of these codes and ordinances or whatever you guys want to call them, that aren't enforced anyway. You know, if we're not going to enforce them, let's not put them in place. I stood up here and gave you a perfect example of a house right down here on 3500 South. That the house is built right next to the fence and the fence is the side of the house. Now, grape stake fence is not fire retardant, fireproof or whatever the code is. I've given the address of that place probably a year ago. It's still there. Why do we put Steve through this? Why do we spend the time, why do you spend the time in those meetings? I know you can't answer me, but I have that question. You know, same thing as the code enforcement. The only reason I came tonight is I wanted to listen to Lane talk about what the plans are going forward there. We've got all these codes. Nobody can enforce them. We let, we let everything go. The house in my neighborhood still has the same furniture sitting out in their front yard. But Lane was, not Lane, but Lane was at least kind enough to go and look at the house the night after the meeting with me. It's still sitting out on the front lawn and that's six weeks ago. We've gone through two pickups, two big pickups. It's still sitting there. They had garbage can in front of their house today, though I don't know if it was theirs because there was probably six more bags thrown to the side of the yard that they don't take care of. You know, I was talking to Lane. This house has had a complaint filed on it every year we've been doing this. Every year. And they're still getting away with it. So we have a $100 fine against this house. This house is owned by, I believe he's in real estate. He lives in Morgan. Lives in a very nice, well-kept house. The house is probably paid for. He's probably renting it for $1,000 a month to multiple families or multiple people from the amount of the garbage that's thrown out there. What do we, $100 to a real estate guy is nothing. He's going to pay that fine and laugh at us. If he's making $1,000 a month, taking all of his tax deductions. We need to put some bite in some of this stuff and go after these absentee slum lords that we're letting move into the city and we don't do anything to. You know, if we're going to take that, let's add some zeros on that $100. Let's take it to $1,000 first fine and then let it double the second time. Let's see how fast these realtors react to West Valley City instead of opening our arms and, excuse the term, bending over and letting them come in here. Because that's what you're doing. I'm sorry, I have an investment in this city. I office here. I live here. I've been in the area for 40 years. You know, but it's getting really close to being run off. I was told by one of the city managers prior to Wayne that I shouldn't even live here because I'm a bigot. You need more bigots like me in the valley to keep their yards up. You know, if, if that's what we're going to do as a city, we're spending all this money on city center, well, there's not a road you can't get to here without driving past some slum lord houses and some nasty fences, unmaintained yards. You know, so the people are going to get off the freeway and what are they going to see? Nasty. You know, it's like I told Wayne when we drove up to that house. There's a house right across the street that had a big tree limb laying in the street in the sidewalk. Well, and I said, you know, Wayne, that will still be laying there in the spring. Well, that's still laying there right now and that's six weeks ago. You know, nobody seemed, you know, nasty breeds nasty. And we got to get to the head of the snake. But as long as nobody does anything, we could spend hours in there talking about codes and ordinances and things we need to do and then do nothing. So when the city decides to step up on multiple issues, you know, I'm sorry, we're going to continue down the same path, letting people get away with and doing what they want. You know, I noticed in the zoning, I could line up my backyard with three 10x12 tough sheds across my backyard. You guys wouldn't know if I was renting those out. Run an extension cord out to them. There's an irrigation ditch right behind my lot. There could be a tube running out there. I could make money. You guys would never know it was there. And if you knew it was there, you wouldn't do anything about it. So until you decide you want to start getting on tough on some of these issues, you know, a limit parking on the street. There's a guy in my neighborhood that owns a recreational vehicle company. He parks all of his RV trailers out on the street because he doesn't have room in his driveway in his yard. And he's been contacted, but it continues. So until the city decides to step up with all the stuff you talk about, you're just wasting a lot of people's time. Everyone has been sitting at the waste of today on some of those code things because people, you don't enforce what's up there. So, good luck.
Thank you. Next, we have Bruce. Hardings?
Hastings.
Hastings.
I'm facing a January 1st, 2016 deadline to comply with the current zoning ordinance for setback. And in the information that I've given to the recorder, there's a letter in there directing me such. I'm concerned that other people in the city may be facing the same deadline. And as I understand it, now we're going to look at perhaps changing the policy. So I'm here asking for an official moratorium to be placed on that enforcement of that, our current zoning setback policy until such time as a determination is made by the city council about changing the policy.
Thank you. Was there anyone else here wanting to make public comment? Okay, with that then, we'll close the public comment portion. And we'll go to our Assistant City Manager, who's representing the city tonight on the council. Any comments?
I would just say, Mayor, that the gentleman, both of your comments are well noted and we will do what we can to get back with you and to give you answers with respect to your request.
To the city council for any comments. Councilman Rushton.
I'll say something here. Hey, just as, as I think Mr. Markham made a really good point about just, you know, why we spend our time on things and maybe why we spin our wheels and do some different stuff. I think it's, I think it's, as Mr. Isaac said, his points well taken. But it's also, I think, interesting that, you know, this, the city council stuff is all about, you know, balance. I could take Mr. Markham or, you know, anybody else in here and show them my city council email list. And the first email is, is, "Why is the city all over me on X, Y, and Z?" And then the very next email is, "How can the city know nothing about A, B, and C, and D?" And so how, just how much this city council position is all about balance. And so I appreciate Mike and his comments because he represents a certain part of the city that's, some points are well taken, that, you know, we need to work on and balance. But, you know, I, I do disagree with him a little bit on the waste of time because I think that, you know, the way that just the third grade civics lessons were brought up to where you have an executive and a legislative and a judicial branch is that, you know, us deliberating and taking time and asking the executive branch to look into something is, you know, really the form of check and balance that we've been given. And so, you know, I know there's been times where somebody's come in and had a code problem and I've said to the executive branch or city managers, I was like, "Hey, why don't you just look the other way on this one? Because, you know, this, it seems nice and, you know, he's a good guy and a good family and just, you know, kind of look the other way, we've got bigger problems." And, you know, the city management response has been, "Well, you know, you guys write the laws and I enforce them. You know, so if you don't like the way we enforce the laws, you gotta re-drive them." And, you know, touche to that because, you know, yeah, it's, you know, that's, like I said, the system of, you know, we write the laws, the executives ask to enforce them and then, you know, judicial is, you know, to clear up and interpret many of those laws. And so I think, you know, what may seem like, you know, a waste of time or, you know, spinning wheels, you know, to me is just, you know, a good exercise in civics and, you know, in checks and balances on that. And said this city council stuff is all about just finding the balance. We try to find the balance, you know, every week and, you know, it's where I know the city has problems, but things that we're trying to address. But I think that's an essential part of the civics and the process that we have and hopefully it'll yield some good results. That's all.
Okay. I also have a couple of comments. As elected officials, we don't always agree on issues. And for example, I for one agree with Mr. Markham's comments that we have too many ordinances. I would love to see fewer and those fewer aggressively enforced on a consistent basis. That would make me much happier. Now, that stance cost me votes when I ran for mayor because not everyone agrees with that. Some want all the ordinances, ordinances and even more of them in place and all of them enforced. And in fact, one gentleman even told me, said, "Well, if people can't live by those, we want them to move." And I say, "Well, that's a pretty stiff penalty for someone to move just because they disagree with some of the ordinance, ordinances that are set up by the city." And I think that's an interesting topic of, if we are considering changing one of our requirements and there's some deadline, I don't know, is that deadline only imposed on that particular individual? Or is there some broader base for that? I would assume that's just for a single individual.
That's correct.
Yeah, because usually that's the way they're handled. And I cannot advise anyone in that situation, but I don't know that I would spend a lot of money if the ordinance, if the requirement may change. Because I don't know that we can get that back to us because next week will be our last meeting of the year because of the holidays. Unless someone wants to give direction otherwise. Mr. Isaac?
I think if you just allow us to speak to the gentleman and we might be able to assist him based on the conversation the council's had in the previous meeting.
Okay. Very good. With that then, we go on to item number eight on our agenda. This is on application ZT 5 2015 requesting some changes in our municipal code regarding the regulation of signs. These are differing signs. We're talking here mainly signs expressing political opinions for campaigns, signs for yard sales, signs for home sale, you know, those open houses, things like that, for grand openings, et cetera. There are all kinds of different signs that come up and this will put us in line with what has currently been established by the courts as to requirements and regulations as to what a government entity can and cannot do. I don't think there was a major change to our, to our code, but rather it brings us into compliance, we believe, with what was set by the courts. That's other branches of government that sometimes says you got to do a better job of it. And we, unfortunately, we were pretty close. Fortunately, we were pretty close. With that introduction then, we will open a public input portion of this meeting and allow any public comment on this application. Is there anyone here to speak on this change to the municipal code to regulate signs? Oh gee, I thought you were all coming here for that. Okay, too bad. No one came to speak on that. Well, that is not unusual. Unfortunately, we don't get a lot of people coming, but this isn't a very controversial issue. So with that, I will close the public input portion. That is now closed. We'll bring it back to the council for any comment or discussion on this issue.
Mayor, I move for approval of ordinance 15-40.
We have a motion, a second?
Second.
Good. We have the motion properly before us. For the information of those who are here or who may be listening in, of course, these are items that we have discussed in a previous council meeting when we studied the issue in more depth. So if we don't spend a lot of time on it, that's not really a surprise. We've asked a lot of questions and analyzed it in previous meetings. With that then, any further discussion or comments?
Comment.
Councilman Rushton.
Somewhat coincidentally, here's an ordinance that probably is one of the more controversial issues, ordinances in the city because there's so many different signs, so many different loopholes, so many questions, so many different types of businesses. But again, in the, in the spirit of trying to, you know, maintain a proper balance, this is a good step forward for the city. But I'm assuming that in the days, weeks, and years ahead, there'll be many comments to where we're enforcing some of these sign ordinance as well and some of them are probably too restrictive and limiting some business. And, you know, we'll be back in the, at some point in time to, you know, try to maintain that good balance for our community and always be working to get our sign ordinance correct. But it's a good step forward.
And it may even last until the next court case.
Yeah.
Seeing no further comments, we'll turn to our city recorder to take the vote.
Councilwoman Lang?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hune?
Aye.
Councilwoman Rushton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Northfelt?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passive unanimous.
Now we go to our resolutions. Next on our agenda, I have resolution 15-194 to approve a franchise agreement between Extonet, or I think that's right, Systems Inc. and the city for a telecommunications network in the city. I believe they said this was the eighth business to come forward to request that, which allows them to install that in city right-of-ways. With that introduction then, we don't hold public hearings on resolutions, so we'll turn right to the council for comment or a motion.
May I move for approval of resolution 15-194?
We have motion to approve. Second? We've got the second. Hope you keep track of these. You do such a good job. I sometimes don't give you enough time, but anyway. That's properly before us. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll place set for a vote. Our recorder.
Councilwoman Northfelt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rushton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hune?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passive unanimous.
Next, we go to resolution 15-195. This is to execute an agreement with UDOT for improvements to city infrastructure associated with the construction of the Mountain View Corridor from 5400 South to 4100 South. That's the next phase of that corridor that will be built. And we work with them, but we have to have something in writing for different things that impact our city since the road has changed dramatically in that part of the city. And you'll see another one immediately following this one. This is a betterment agreement. The next one will be a utility one. But with that introduction to the council on this agreement for action or comment, maybe?
May I move for approval of resolution 15-195?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. That's in place. Motion is before us. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, we'll place that for a vote.
Councilwoman Lang?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hune?
Aye.
Councilwoman Rushton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Northfelt?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passive unanimous.
Okay, with that then, we go to resolution 15-196. This is to exercise a master utility agreement with UDOT again for construction along the Mountain View Corridor from 5400 South to 4100 South. And the construction of that begins in the spring. And there are utilities that need to be moved and this sets in place the process for doing that. With that introduction then, we'll go to the council for a motion or comment.
I move for approval, resolution 15-196.
We have the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, whichever. With that is properly before us. Any further discussion or comment? Seeing none, we'll place that for a vote. Turn to our recorder.
Councilwoman Northfelt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rushton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hune?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Aye.
Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passive unanimous.
Thank you. We now go to resolution 15-197. This is to award a contract to Whittaker Construction for a roadway project, 2400 South, 4800 West. We're extending that road out to 5600... No, wait a minute. That's a different one. Got to get it right. 2400 South and 4800 West. We have so many of these that I have to remember which one we're on. And where's that one at?
Oh, this is, you're right. It just, it starts at 4800.
Oh, okay, that's right. I was thinking, okay, yeah, it was too far to the west. This connects with 5600 West. There, okay. I was in the right place. And that little piece, right now it's a cul-de-sac, ends before 5600 West. This is to work on that road. We've gotten a number of agreements and rights of temporary easement for construction, getting the right-of-way for different little pieces in order to extend that road right out to 5600 West. That will include eventually a coordination with UDOT in moving the signal to that location from the current existing one. There'll be no extra ones. It's just moving the one that's there. Okay. Now I've got it before us, right. With that then, to the council for a motion or comment.
May I move for approval of resolution 15-197?
We have a motion to approve, a second?
Second.
Got a second? It's properly before us. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll place that for a vote.
Councilwoman Lang?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hune?
Aye.
Councilwoman Rushton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Northfelt?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passive unanimous.
Thank you. Now we go to resolution 15-198. This is to authorize a warranty deed from Raymond Crane and Jamie Crane for approximately, for property at approximately 5980 West, 4100 South. Boy, I forgot everything from last week in our discussion. So 60th West, 4100 South. And I believe that this is, again, property related to an intersection there. The 5980, as we widen, certain portions of intersections actually have to get ownership of the property if we're going to widen the road there. So with that then... So with that then, introduction, we'll go to the council for a motion or action or comment.
Mayor, I move for approval of resolution 15 dash 198.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. It's properly before us. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll place set for a vote.
Councilman Northwell?
Yes.
Councilman Rushton?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ling?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. With that, that concludes our regularly scheduled agenda where there is no need for an executive session. Any last comments from the council?
Just remind everyone about the cog luncheon tomorrow noon at the cultural center.
That's right. And I was at the cultural center last night. We had a great concert. Good things happening there. This will be another good one tomorrow. Hopefully, some of you can make that. With that then, one last motion.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned.